Thank you, sir. It is 11:15. Can I say the council room has called order to draw me the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proceed please. Well, the record likes to state that we had technical difficulties which prevented us from starting our meeting at seven o'clock this evening. So in order to have public access to the meeting through our website, we did delay the opening of the meeting until about 7:15. So thank you for your patience if you're online here this evening. Okay, roll call please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Gates, here. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mr. McGlocken, here.
I'm now entertaining a motion to dispense with a reading of the Journal on April 6, 2020.
One second.
I have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin, dispense with a reading of the Journal on April 6, 2020. Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McGlocken?
Yea.
That motion passes. We come to the public comment on our agenda. And again, we have advertised if you have a public comment you would like to have inserted during a discussion of piece of legislation or just a public comment you'd like to make in general on behalf of our council. We encourage you to send those in by mail or email. And they would have to be in our office by 4:00 PM on Monday of the council meeting. So as far as I know, there were no comments sent in via mail or email these last two weeks. So we'll move forward to reports from standing and special committees, Finance and Personnel Committee, Councilman Gates.
Mayor, thank you. The committee did meet via Zoom last Thursday. We began, as we always do, with a combined financial statement. As a rule of thumb, this is for, well, this isn't rule of thumb, but it's the first three months of the year, 25% of the year. So as people look down through the both the income and appropriations, you know, that 25% is a good rule of thumb to use. That doesn't apply across the board, but it's just something to take a look at. First, of course, we always look at the general fund. And we can see that the beginning of the year, we had $200, excuse me, $929,000 in the general fund. The cash as of the end of the end of March was $662,000. You see what's there for encumbrance and then what's screen clear, the $482,000. One thing to keep in mind, that we did get the first half of real estate tax collections in April. They were deposited in April. And so if we look to see that the year-to-date change, very good-sized number there of $268,000, you know, it's always a cash flow. And again, with having received the real estate taxes in April, that will tend to balance that, to lift that negative figure come the end of April. Going down through the other funds that, of course, are always concerned, the three utilities. The sewer fund is looking at the cash, is down a little bit. The water fund, down also. The electric fund is down, but we knew that was down because of our efforts to intentionally to bring down the balance of the electric fund. Hospitalization fund had $421,000 in cash the end of March. And of course, we like that to be no less than $300,000. So the hospitalization fund is in good shape there. Continuing and looking at the various comparisons, I'm not going to belabor these too much. My colleagues can go through and look to see what those are. We did have, Mr. Crum has looked at the last part of the income tax. We can see that individual income tax is up nearly 10 and a half percent. Business is down, withholding is down. The finance director has predicted a severe drop in withholding for April and possibly into May. Now, part of that is because the filing deadline has been extended to mid-July. And so where we would have had people, in Russia, people by April 15th, you know, for those taxpayers who owe money, they're going to wait until the last possible minute to do that. But of course, you know, that deals with individuals. This is withholding. Withholding is what employers withhold. And so that's really not going to be subject to whatever the tax filing deadlines, because those people have, depending on the size of their business, you know, whether it's monthly they file, whether it's quarterly they file, they have deadlines, and those deadlines aren't happening. They still need to make them. So, you know, I, with all due respect, I hope the finance director is wrong in his prediction that they don't have a severe drop in withholding. But, you know, it remains to be seen with the current situation. The next page is looking at the different comparisons in the utilities, both in 2020 and 2019. If we look in the middle, the expenditures for all funds, we can see that in all funds, the wages are up 2.9%. That's predicted. Hospitalization up is 4.9, that's predicted. Purchase power is down, that's good. The last part has to do with income tax, and you can see the transfers to the various funds. Looking down at the bottom of those, in 2019, we transferred $908,000. This year, it's $902,000, down a little bit, but for all practical purposes, pretty flat there. So that's, that's good. We'll continue to monitor and see, take a look at that. The next page is cash and investment reconciliation. You can see that as of the March 31st, we had $14,151,211.85 in the city treasury spread across four financial institutions. I had asked about interest rates. The news is not good there, that's expected. The interest rate, Mrs. Cutliffe explained to us, is about 0.01%, you know, one one-hundredth of a percent. Fortunately, the city was able to lock in some at the grand interest rate of one-half percent. So that's, that's no surprise. We knew that that's where interest rates were going. What is not good is we learned at the committee that the fees that we are paying these financial institutions are greater than the interest rate that we are earning. That is, that, this member of the committee took great offense to that. I suggested that the finance director, the deputy finance director play a good cop, bad cop, and jawbone, arm twist, whatever verb you want to use, to try to get this around. Now, I understand how banks work, to the extent that anyone, a non-banker, understands how banks work. But we, as the city of Shelby, are not in business to subsidize the banks. And when our interest rate is lesser than the fees they're charging, that's what we're doing. And that is a situation that we, we can't sustain now. Now, we've all got enough credit card teasers in the mail, you know, where they're, put your paying the interest rate, no, we'll give you 0% for six months, a year, whatever. And then, of course, when that time disappears, you get socked. We might have to move our money, knowing that we may get socked in years' time. But if we have to play these four financial institutions off against each other to benefit the taxpayers of this city, so be it. We see a small report for the Sutter Rouch Fund. The investments there, Edward Jones took a hit from $65,000 to $54,000, $55,000, looks somewhat like my IRA. The next sheet we have is a comparison of income tax collections. The top part of that are cumulative throughout the year, and the bottom is actual monthly figures. If we look at cumulative figures at the top, and we look at March across the board, where this year we had $958,000, the finance director pronounced that in the ballpark compared to the other years. You can see in '18, it took a big drop for, well, I know that because I believe that's when the department was working short. So that, that explains why that number is down quite a bit. So, but again, in the ballpark is, is good. I like that, that analysis. I had asked about timely deposits. Colleagues, you'll remember that we would have been cited by the state audit for deposits of money not being made in a timely manner. We passed legislation earlier this year dealing with that. We have good news. The utility department is complying very well with getting their deposits in. And the income tax department, which did get digging in the last audit, is making deposits, getting those monies to Mrs. Cutliffe on a daily basis. So I'm, I'm very glad to hear, and because this is something that we have dealt with for a number of years. So I'm glad to see that matters are being taken care of. So thank you to Mr. Ensmann and his staff at the utility office for getting the deposits in a timely manner, and to the clerks in the income tax department for getting those made in a timely manner as well. Mayor, you gave us a brief personnel report. We talked about overtime. In the, in the fire service, we have one firefighter who is in the reserves. He has been in and out as he is called up for, for duty. So, and we also have another officer who is on sick leave, recovered from shoulder surgery. So that has really impacted the fire department on overtime. Conversely, in the, in the police department, overtime is significantly down. I think I had a conversation with the chief the other day, and he mentioned that, I think it was $14 in overtime in the last paper. And as Mrs. Cutliffe said, she didn't mean it to be a joke, but it came across funny to this member, where she said that no one's using sick leave, where could they go? So, which is true. And also, the school resource officers are not, the Shelby School's not a pioneer, they're again. So that, their availability has, has reduced the need for overtime in the police department. So, you know, that is a good thing. That's all I have to report. If my colleague, Mr. Martin, has anything to add, certainly invite him to do so. Mayor, then I move that the combined financial statement and the cash investment and reconciliation statement, both as of the 31st of March, 2020, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city's website.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin. That the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated March 31st, 2020, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion on that motion? Roll call please.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McGlocken?
Yea.
That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Gates, for your referral and fond report. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gates in regard to his report?
If you have any, I'll defer to the finance.
Yeah, they get that.
I'm a bit shy.
Here we go. We'll move forward. The Utilities and Streets Committee did not meet this month. Mr. Martin?
We did, we did not meet. There wasn't anything for full discussion necessary. But I was able to work with Mr. Ensmann on the stimulus and stabilization package. We worked through that quite a bit during that time. And so excited to have a piece of legislation for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward to our reports of city officials, and I think we got late start. I'll keep things as brief as I possibly can. I think across the city, we're pretty much operating as we have been the last few weeks, staggering our staff, checking temperatures, following all the protocols from the governor's office. And we'll, of course, be waiting to see how things unfold towards the end of the month, in the month of May, with all particulars. Also, I think you probably saw a press release that we had another citizen that tested positive for COVID-19. The good news is that three of the six have now reached the recovery status. And so that is, that is good news for us and them, of course. I received a request to deliver a proclamation, Mental Health Month 2020, from the Richland County Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. And it is a lengthy proclamation. I will read through and maybe disabbreviate a paragraph here or there with the time constraint that we have here this evening. But the proclamation, and I want to say before I do this, I think most of us know Mr. Joe Trolley and all his staff over in Richland County. And they have been, I think, real leaders in the area of mental health, education, and treatment. And especially in the area of the opioid crisis, they've been a model really for across the state. So we're very, very privileged to be collaborating with Mr. Trolley and his staff and all the, all the other entities that work in Richland County. So this, this is how the proclamation came to be. Some of it's kind of a little different. A proclamation is kind of listing some, some components of what has brought success to, to the board and to the citizens of Richland County. Whereas during stat fiscal year 2019, through three contract agencies, Catalyst Life Services, Family Life Counseling, Mansfield HumanDob, and multiple affiliate treatment agencies, Richland County served 8,531 residents for behavioral health treatment. And whereas to better serve the future leaders of our community, the Richland County Behavioral Health System provided trauma-informed, resilience, and recovery-oriented treatment services to 2,872 children and adolescents, with prevention and educational services being provided in all nine school districts in Richland County, including several charter and private educational settings. And whereas to continue to strengthen Richland County, the behavioral board, the behavioral health system, provided trauma-informed, resilience, and recovery-oriented treatment services to 5,659 adults. Of this number, 2,0249 received treatment for substance use disorder, 2,747 received treatment for a mental illness, and 663 were seen for both a substance use disorder and mental illness. And whereas through prevention in schools, education provided to the educators, employers, and the general public in collaboration with grassroots advocacy organizations, Richland County saw a reduction in suicides from 23 in calendar year 2018 to nine in calendar year 2019. This is the lowest rate since 2004. And whereas in order to address the opioid epidemic in Richland County, teams made up of a law enforcement officer, a treatment provider, and a community advocate are dispatched to contact residents that overdosed. These teams have responded to 285 residents. And when successful contact was made, over 70% of these people entered treatment. Whereas, Richland County embraces the collaboration between, and it mentions several different entities here, behavioral health, a criminal justice system, a crisis intervention team, and so forth. And whereas, the next paragraph, having a safe place to live is essential in promoting recovery, resilience, and trauma-informed care. To that end, Richland County's behavioral health systems provided 56 units of permanent supportive housing, eight units of transitional housing, 28 units of recovery housing, 11 units of service-enriched housing, 13 units of crisis stabilization, 32 units of gender-specific substance use disorder residential care, and 16 units of withdrawal management. And whereas, Richland County has made great strides in providing outreach and immediate access to the community. The next paragraph, and whereas we continue to build Richland County as a trauma-informed, resilience, and recovery-oriented community through education and outreach. The National Alliance on Mental Illness has graduated over 30 classes of family-to-family. Community action for capable youth has bolstered its work through mentoring and parenting. And the board has provided community education to over 900 Richland County residents. These efforts have continued to promote and strengthen the Know It Before You Need It initiative. And whereas, in response to the COVID-19 epidemic, Richland County treatment agencies adapted to coordinating tele services when possible, as well as creating clean and safe ways to continue face-to-face services when necessary. Community action for capable youth set up an interactive parenting web presence to assist parents in adapting to homeschooling. And the National Alliance for Mental Illnesses, or Mental Illness, rather, expanded its telephonic outreach to families to make sure supports are there for those who need it. As part of healthcare, our agencies were deemed essential services and have adapted accordingly. Now, therefore, I, Stephen L. Shag, Mayor of the City of Shelby, Ohio, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Mental Health Month in Shelby. And as mayor, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Shelby, to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps that citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. In witness whereon, I have herein to set my hand this 20th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2020. And when you get a little opportunity to digest all those figures, the Richland County Mental Health Recovery Services Board has done a marvelous job in Richland County, so kudos to them. There will be a joint proclamation made by all the mayors of cities and villages across Richland County to put together a thing that would be presented in the month of May. So really, really good stuff. Another part of my report, you have before you a COVID-19 Shelby stimulus and stabilization package. And this does kind of weave its way into legislation that will come to the table this evening. I think there are at least three pieces of legislation that are tied to this stimulus and stabilization package. We want to thank Mr. Ensmann, Mr. Phil Jordan, Councilman Martin, and any others who had a part in this, of bringing something together for our citizens that we could do as a, you know, a investor-owned utility to try to bring some short-term and long-term relief to our ratepayers. And so I'm not going to go into this in great detail. You have it before you, but just number one, of course, late payment charged or past due, past dues, there will be a waiver for the month of May billing period. That would amount to our electric system in revenues, take about a $12,000 hit on that, absorbing that to make that happen. And if council would desire to do that for April as well, legislation would need to be amended. Number two is a, is a, is a very, I think, impressive, short-term, immediate point of relief, 50% reduction of the electric fuel and purchase power adjustment for the May billing period. This is described as a short-term but substantial stimulus. This would announce about our fund providing some $350,000 in one-time monthly credit for all electrical customers. And that, on the bill, you'll see that as your energy component. And I think for a good many folks, this would be approximately 50% of the entire bill. I kind of figured it correctly. I looked at my bill, a little less than 50% of the entire bill. Number three, generation charge reduction. This is a long-term stimulus. And this adjusts that generation charge. And this will provide about a $94,000 worth of annual savings to ratepayers. This would be effective in July. So that's more of a long-term stimulus. Number four, the balance levelization being adjusted, and that will be explained in the legislation. And this would be approximately $3,100 monthly increase to the credit amount. So this is again part of a long-term business plan for our electric division. Number five, there are no electric or water shut-offs until June. And that could be changed as, as you see how things unfold during this crisis time. And then, of course, we publicize for additional sharing funds, and there's some details given for that. The utilities office has modified the budget billing policy. And this is what I'm sure will have us publicizing in the paper a little bit later, if it pleases council. And then, number eight, of course, the economic development coordinator, Mr. Jessica Ribbon, has organized a weekly Zoom meeting for Shelby businesses. It is an informative meeting that helps explain, provides guidance and updates on the business, to the business community on federal, state, and local assistance programs. So again, I want to thank Mr. Ensmann and Councilman Martin that are here this evening for putting something together. And I think it's a really, really nice package for the citizens of Shelby and our ratepayers. And again, this, this will weave its way into all of our legislation this evening. So that is my report. Are there any comments or questions for me? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I want to rise to your defense and the defense of Dr. Chala and Mrs. Conrad and Mrs. Ellenberger. And there last week in the local paper was a letter to the editor, which I consider to be a scurrilous indirect attack on you and on the local health department. And to make that any worse, there were, there was a, there was a racist overtone to it as well. I found the letter quite offensive. In dealing with COVID-19, the problem is, is we, we don't know what we don't know. But we do have some history that we can look back on. And that, of course, was the worldwide pandemic of 1918. Now, I have, I have some personal connections with that. On one day in, in, in 1918, my grandfather Gates and his mother, Berta Krevlin Gates, died of the influenza on the same day. My grandfather in Gallion, my great-grandmother in Ganges. My father, who was two years old, never knew his father. So that's, that's the personal history that connects you here. But I want to share briefly, it's a long article, and I might share a few paragraphs. It's from The Week. The Week is a, it's a digest of U.S. and international news. I've subscribed for years. It's, it's very good. They don't do their own reporting. They, they compile from other sources. But the story is called "Philadelphia's Deadly Parade: How the Refusal to Ban Large Public Gatherings During the 1918 Spanish Flu Pandemic Led to Disaster." Starts out, why hold a parade? America was in the waning months of World War I, and officials across the country were under enormous pressure to sell war bonds or livery loans. Big parades were staged in major cities to rally the public behind the war bond effort. On September 28, 1918, Philadelphia city officials refused to cancel their parade amid the pandemic with devastating health consequences. Why didn't Philadelphia cancel the parade? The decision fell to Health Commissioner Wilbur Cruzen. a political appointee with no prior public health experience. Thank goodness that we have a health commissioner who is a physician. And we have the other staff, we have a registered nurse, we have the sanitary staff. We have people who are qualified by their education and by their experience to lead our health department. Doctors pleaded with him to cancel the parade, with one branding it, quote, "a ready-made inflammable mass for conflagration," unquote. The Spanish flu was a new strain of the influenza virus to which no one had any immunity, unlike today's coronavirus. It often led to pneumonia and an overreaction by an overwhelmed immune system that destroyed people's lungs. Well, they didn't cancel the parade, goes on. On the twenty-eighth, this is September twenty-eighth, the snaking line of Boy Scouts marching bands, women's auxiliaries and troops, two miles long, wound its way up Broad Street. Warplanes flew overhead as an enormous tightly-packed crowd of two hundred thousand cheered. Within three days, every bed in Philadelphia's thirty-one hospitals was occupied. Within a week, forty-five thousand citizens were infected and the entire city had shut down. Did the shutdown help? It was too late. By the second week in November, twelve thousand Philadelphians were dead. And the phrase, quote, "bodies stacked like cordwood," unquote, had become commonplace among the survivors. "It was an apocalyptic scene," said Kenneth Davis, an historian. He goes on, "In some cases, public health nurses would be walking into tenements and finding whole families dead," unquote. Bodies piled up on sidewalks after the city mall, capable of holding only thirty-six people was overwhelmed. Within six months, sixteen thousand were dead, and a half a million Philadelphians had fallen ill with the flu. How did other cities fare? Researchers have found that cities that quarantined the sick and shut schools, churches, theaters, saw fifty percent lower death rates than those that did not. In Milwaukee, which had the lowest death rate, six tenths of a percent of any large city in America during the pandemic, the city's health commissioner, Dr. George Ruhland, had aggressively shut schools, saloons and public places the moment the virus arrived there. In St. Louis, where their health commissioner canceled the parade, the peak death rate was only one eighth that of Philadelphia. God help us, and I say that reverently, if we let our guard down to the city. It happened then, it can happen again. So again, Mayor, kudos to you and the health department staff. What you have done has been calm, it has been prudent. And to the extent that we get more complete testing, I believe we'll find that it was, is and will be a thing. So again, my thanks to you and your staff.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any further comments, questions? Mr. Martin?
Yes, Mayor, the governor is going through a plan of reopening Ohio. And I just wanted to know from the administration's perspective, what are we waiting for as far as guidance from the governor? Or are we in a position to come up with our own plans? And kind of what does that look like going forward as we go through this?
I think when the governor's plan comes down, we as, with our medical director and the staff on Shelby City, we'll kind of take a look at that. So I don't know what that looks like exactly until I see with the governor. But we've been pretty well keeping a step with the governor's orders.
Have you or anybody in Richland County Commissioner's Office or otherwise gotten kind of a feedback of when you can expect that?
No, I haven't. I'll move forward then to Mr. Crum, Director of Finance's report.
Thank you. Once again, I'll try to be as brief as possible because I know there's a lot going on tonight. Yeah, right now, we're kind of assuming about a twenty percent reduction in revenues. I have heard that from several sources, but I don't have any true research backup from that, that sort of hearsay around the municipal palaces in the area. I have been kind of keeping tabs on the various stimulus packages for both individuals and businesses. And by no means an expert, just for, one, your guys' knowledge. And then also for, as you're talking with the folks in your wards, I'll give you a brief couple minutes here of stuff that's going on. Obviously, on the personal side, I think the biggest thing is the checks that people should be receiving any day now, if they haven't already, of twelve hundred dollars a person and then five hundred dollars for each child. Of course, once again, there are income limitations and such on that, but I think most of our population will receive those. That is great, hopefully it will help meet expenses for everybody. That is not earned income, so we do not get any withholding on that. That's not taxable to the city at all. Also, unemployment, you know, it is probably the highest ever right now. They have, I believe that they're giving an extra six hundred dollars on top of their normal unemployment rates, which is based on a person's income and such. They are also now opening that up to self-employed individuals who can no longer work. Once again, though, unemployment is unearned income, so we will not have to see withholding on that. But hopefully it at least keeps the citizens, you know, paying the bills and able to survive. On the business side of things, you know, there was a massive rollout of programs. One, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, which was done on a website. And supposedly, they would, the government would give you ten thousand dollars right up front that is forgivable, and then a loan after that. Then they changed it to a thousand dollars per employee after ten thousand dollars. And then, of course, they ran out of money. So it's a great little program to get some cash fast. I don't know how many of our businesses receive that money. I'll probably be checking with Jessica here to see how that went over. Along the same lines, the payroll protection program was a significantly larger giveaway, where more or less the government would give enough money to a business to cover their payroll, rent, utilities for a couple of months, for a length period. That program had to be done with the banks, who were kind of blindsided by it. And it was rushed into the program and, once again, ran out of money rather quickly. So I don't know if any of our citizens received any of those funds yet or not. I have read that there is another plan to put, I think, another two hundred and fifty billion into a stimulus package to refund these programs. This will surprise you guys, sometimes politicians can't get along. And so I guess they're working some things out at the federal level. And, but, you know, my personal guess is that probably that will pass. And maybe provide some more funds for some of our businesses, especially since the banks kind of know what they're doing now. And our local bank can compete a little better. So I'm hoping, I'm hopeful for our businesses that they receive those funds. From the city's standpoint, in addition to our citizens having funds to live on, we would see some revenue from that, obviously. If they're bringing their employees back and paying the payroll, we would get withholding on that. For their utility payments, you know, this would help them pay some of their bills if they can get the funds. I did also see from Jessica and her newsletters that the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation is offering a five thousand dollar grant to small businesses with three to twenty employees. The citizens of, it depends on zip codes, Shelby is one of those zip codes. That went live at three o'clock today, by about three oh two, their website crashed. So I do hope that our citizens have been paying attention to what Jessica has been putting out and can get ahold of some of those funds to help them through. But yeah, please encourage your, the folks in your wards, if they have a business, talk to Jessica because she is very up on this. And, you know, individuals, especially if they're unemployed, to look into the unemployment options. So that's kind of how, those are, a few of them will affect the city, most of them are still going to be left out of the bill. I have looked into whether there was some sort of government aid for local governments. That was kind of left out of the bill. I know that some of the municipality groups have been speaking with our representation at the federal level to potentially include local governments in something in the next, in the future funding. So I'll keep you posted if I hear anything on that. That's pretty much my report. Does anybody have any questions?
Comments or questions in regard to Mr. Crum's report? I do say again, Jessica and Julie Perry from Richland Area Chamber, I think Julie's put out like eighteen, I don't know how you call them, just messages with all sorts of inspirational and informational help to businesses and not just members of the chamber. They've reached out well beyond their membership to help any business in Richland County. So it's a great resource to have. All right, move forward then, Mr. Isra's not here this evening. Mr. Gates, do you want to continue your report?
Just real quick, this coming Friday, scheduled from eight-thirty to ten-thirty, we're going to have the backup generator for City Hall activated. So in doing that, though, they will have to shut the power off to City Hall and a few other local businesses that we've already alerted. So that means phone service for City Hall, our fire department, water treatment plant, utility office and wastewater treatment plant will be down during that time. So we'll put out a big press release here tomorrow doing that. So I just want to let you know, and our email server will be down at that time also. So hopefully during this generator, we won't have to worry about this anymore. And it'll kick on very quickly and we have a battery backup on all those devices. So it should, when the generator kicks on, it should be right, ready to go. So just like when the tornado, we didn't have phones and email for quite some time till they got the power back on, so this will hopefully be like that. Also, the city does have a Zoom account now, so for the committee meetings, you know, if we can use that for the different committee meetings, and I can broadcast it through broadcast, I won't have to have a camera sitting on a TV that way. I've got to figure out how to get that set up. But I can work with Stacy to make sure we send out all the meeting invites to everyone if we're going to do Zoom committee meetings and so forth, so it's all I have.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Gates?
I know we pushed off bids for street surfacing projects, but considering that, you know, oil is going down and we know that asphalt will quickly follow, are there any plans for us to at least get some bids to see if that would be advantageous? Because I mean, I'm looking to the future, we're having obviously lower gas tax and we're also looking at twenty percent less revenues. Overall, and that's before next year hits with our income tax, it might be a good idea to hit while the iron is hot and asphalt is going to be possibly record lows. So what is our plan regarding that?
As you recall, a few weeks ago, we had a great master plan set out. And, you know, we have a like five-year paving plan. And things were pretty well falling into place until COVID-19. So we have been discussing this internally. I think there's going to have to be some modifications to that plan, hopefully counterbalance by the low oil prices. But we know that the gas taxes will find, get better information from Amber at the most recent information. So we still will be doing paving, it'll be modified. We're probably going to have to pull back here or there. But like I say, it may be, there may be the benefits of the lower asphalt prices, which is very unusual, am I right, gentlemen? We've seen nothing but asphalt prices go up, but perhaps this would be the rare time period. So I guess to say the same, we will take full advantage of what we can with the monies we have available, projected to be available, to get as much paving as we can in this environment.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for bringing it up. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gates, Project Coordinator. Could I have a move forward to new business, is there a new business to be brought before Council? Mr. Gates?
Apparently there's an article last week, Department of Education and the future of Skiles Field. I didn't bring a paper, I should have, but there was the superintendent who was quoted as saying, making some records about gifting land to the city. And I want to take this moment to dissuade Superintendent Tarver and the Department of Education. They cannot gift land to the city. The city acquires land only if the city council agrees to accept it. So they cannot act unilaterally in, you know, if that's what they choose to do, you know, the stadium land, the central school land, to give that to the city. If we get to that point, the city needs to look very seriously at our capacity to maintain that. My guess is, and it's more than just a guess, the Park Department and its staff has their hands full mowing the land that they have now. Now, I don't know how big, how much acres there are from Skiles Field south to Tucker Avenue, but it's a pretty good chunk of land. And I wouldn't want to say it would double the existing parkland, but again, it would stretch the capacity of the park staff to maintain that. So I just, you know, the, Mr. Tarver and the school board just need to know that they can't just get rid of the land, dump it on for the city. That may be a poor verb to use, but I've used it. It has to be a cooperative decision between the Department of Education and the city.
Thank you. Any other new business? A little bit of unfinished business. Naturally, in these last few weeks, I've heard nothing in regard to the Main Street Fire Station, future use. But I did mention that the Historical Preservation Commission, we will be endeavoring to contact community once more here. So I will try to get back in touch with them. Exterior maintenance for tonight on West Main Street. I drove by the other day, it looks pretty much the same as I had the last few months. I think we're just maintaining a status quo there. And again, before the COVID-19 crisis, there was some movement on selling that property. So hopefully that will be able to move forward here in the very near future. Anything else on unfinished business? If not, we'll move forward then to, yes?
I'd like to move for a five-minute recess.
Okay, second. We have a motion by Mr. McGlocken and a second by Mr. Martin for a five-minute recess discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocken?
Yeah.
Okay, how long's the recess is, about seven, eight, oh, seven? Gentlemen, it's still live broadcasting, we're not at a pause. At eight-twelve, the council will come back in session. Now, we'll move forward to legislation. Mr. Crum?
Orders number ten, two thousand twenty, enacting section two hundred thirty point zero four, federal uniform guidance policies of chapter two thirty, Mayor of the Confined Organizations of the City of Shelby.
Move for first reading. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the first reading of orders number ten, two thousand twenty. Discussion, Mr. Gates.
Mayor, in the last audit, the, the city, the state auditor issued a couple findings against the City of Shelby. One, we've already dealt with, that was the one with timely deposits. This is the second finding dealing with uniform federal guidance policies as they relate to federal grants. The whereas paragraphs prelude the reasons. This was something that the state auditor was asking for action by the city council. So, that is why this piece of legislation was before us.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Orders number ten, two thousand twenty, passes as first reading.
Orders number eleven, two thousand twenty, amending chapter one thousand fifty, electricity, section one thousand fifty point zero two, rates and charges for service, generation charge of the Confined Organizations of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Who are the orders being given as first reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates for the first reading of orders number eleven, two thousand twenty. Discussion, Mr. Martin.
Uh, this is one piece of the Shelby stimulus stabilization package, the aforementioned package. This is more of a long-term stimulus, as in it's won't be a temporary thing, but a long-term adjustment. Again, providing a relief to rate payers at around ninety-four thousand dollars a year. So, this is just one step. I do want to mention that this is also a stair-step approach. We want to make sure that we have our math correct on this. There is a potential for some additional cuts available to us later on in the year after a six-month review. Nothing promising, of course, but we are going to review this after six months to see if we can even cut it further. But again, as is our policy, has been our policy, we don't like to yo-yo this thing. We want to make sure we're on a steady decrease versus having to decrease and then jump up because we got bigger wrong and, you know, and such. So, I just want to let everyone know that, that's the intent, is to do a six-month review of this, notwithstanding this is a, a long-term benefit to our reviews.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Robb?
There, there are a number of issues dealing with electric, electric rates and, and that kind of, those things. Just to save a little time, I'll just ask the question that I had for all of it was, is this in the foreseeable future going to cause us, give us any reason for, in the foreseeable future, is this going to cause us to have to raise these rates back up?
Mr. Martin?
Uh, nothing, nothing that we're doing is going to require us to raise rates in the future. The, which is why we're doing the stair-step on this, just to make sure. Our initial thought was to cut it further, but Mr. Ensmann, Mr. Jordan didn't feel comfortable in doing that without knowing if we'd have to, again, raise the generation charge up. But none of this should negatively affect it because of the balance that we have in the six-hundred fund allows us to make these changes and use the available balance in that six-hundred fund without having to go back and raise rates in the future.
Mr. Robb? I just don't want to, to put this out there and have people be comfortable with it and then later, you know, have that become as a surprise, your rates are going up.
Mr. Martin?
I certainly can't speak to councils in the future, right? But it's not our intention to do a, none of these, even when they say short-term stimulus, it's not that we're just doing it in the short term and then ballooning things up later on or passing the buck down the road. These are true stimulus that are going to be able to do our repairs and they are, in essence, paid for because of the balance in the six-hundred fund.
And I'd invite Mr. Ensmann, I asked him to come here this evening in case there were questions on, you know, on some of the genesis of, of all of these elements. And I think we all know Mr. Ensmann and, and his expertise in this field and kind of using the Connect Energy Rate Study as a framework. That's sort of what Mr. Ensmann and Mr. Jordan were able to do, to use, just not, you know, just pulling figures out of there, but using that rate study framework. So, Mr. Ensmann feels confident in this particular legislation, that that's a good solid number. And Mr. Ensmann, you can chime in any time or if that summarizes it for you at this point?
Very well.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Gates?
Trying to think about the, the, more specific where the impact is and, and if Mr. Ensmann then know this figure, you know, he can give me a call. On a percentage basis, what percentage of the electric revenue is residential, what percentage is commercial, and what percentage is industrial?
I have those percentages at the office, but I do, no, I do not have them online. So, I have to give you an email or give you a call tomorrow.
Please do. And if I might ask, we can send them out to all the members of the council, they'll know that.
Okay. And for the discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Orders number eleven, two thousand twenty, passes as first reading.
Resolution number sixteen, two thousand twenty, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to participate in the ODOT road salt contract awarded in two thousand twenty and declaring an emergency.
Move the resolution, we take on the pass? Yeah. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passes of resolution number sixteen, two thousand twenty. Discussion, Mr. Gates.
Um, remember this was on the agenda at the last council meeting and we asked council to postpone to this meeting. Mr. Ensmann and I, and we did meet, went through the finances and so forth and on your, on the order sheet that's on there, we had sixteen tons before, we'd like to change that to twelve hundred tons. We did apply for the four hundred, the additional four hundred through the, we're looking to apply for in the county's program. There's no requirement that we have to take that amount at that point, so that way we've got us another avenue to get salt if we need to, but we will be able to go over ten percent on the ODOT plan if we needed to. But we've got, what did Mr. Shepherd say, he hasn't been right now? Four. He's got about four hundred ton in there right now, typical winter, sixteen hundred tons, so we're right there on so forth. So, we feel this would be a good, good game plan.
Further discussion? You say this piece needs amended? Mr. Gates?
The actual piece of legislation doesn't, it's just the, the application when we go on. Uh, you have to do it on the computer, we were just going to put twelve hundred instead of sixteen hundred.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Because we have to take nine percent of the order, right?
Correct.
Right. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Resolution number sixteen, two thousand twenty, passes.
Resolution number seventeen, two thousand twenty, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into an easement agreement with AEP on the City of Shelby Main Street property and referenced by the legal property description and declaring an emergency.
Move the resolution, we take on the pass? Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passes of resolution number seventeen, two thousand twenty. Discussion, Mr. Gates.
Um, council voted to acquire the property where the lift station is at the, for our West Main Street property. High Power AEP already had transmission lines going through there through an easement before. They're, they're changing a few things, but they wanted the actual easement in the city's name since we now own the property. Law Director worked with their law, legal, for quite some time and, and come down to this agreement here, so.
Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I'm looking at the, the plaque of easement and our property and, and I'm wondering where it is that the lift station is actually constructed on this.
If I can, Mr. Gates.
Is it there?
Over here.
It's over here? Okay. So, our new lift station is, is not within the existing easement?
That's correct.
That, that's, that's good to know. Because as I read through the actual easement, uh, the grand tour that's, uh, no event shall the grand tour erect permit any temporary permanent building, structure, improvement or obstruction, including an aluminum storage tanks, billboard, sign, sheds, dumpsters, light poles, water. So, that was a big question I had, had, had we violated the existing ordinance unknowingly when we built the subs, or the lift station? Evidently that is, that's not the case. So, that, that relieves concern I had. Looking first page of the actual easement itself, there's reference to the, the easement from nineteen sixteen involving a FP and Mini Crumb and then one from nineteen seventy-four with Birch and Lee Smith, writing the book of those people. Do we have copies of those by chance somewhere?
I believe I do.
Okay. I, I, Mayor, I'd like to see those, just, you know, because they do, what we would, what we are being asked to consider would modify those two, those two easements. So, uh, there's another part here that concerned me a lot. My main concern was if our existing, or if our new lift station was in the easement, it's not. If it were, I would probably vote against this, but that, that fear has been dissuaded. But we did have communication from the law director regarding the amount. The, it's a thousand dollars, I believe, is what the, the actual legislation says in section one. The actual easement itself says it considers in consideration some of ten dollars and other good valuable considerations. I know that's boilerplate, so, there's used to be one dollar forever and ever, now they're ten. Well, that was my main concern was there was our lift station in relation to the existing fifty-foot, the existing easement. I'm not sure why AEP wants something new because the current things apply, but if we get a thousand dollars out of it, so be it. Not the sound person there.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Resolution number seventeen, two thousand twenty, passes.
Resolution number nineteen, two thousand twenty, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to waive the late payment charge penalty from residential, commercial, and industrial utility account holders for the May billing period and declaring an emergency.
Move the resolution, take on the pass? Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passes of resolution number nineteen, two thousand twenty. Discussion, Mr. Martin?
Uh, this again is another piece of the stimulus, stimulus package. We're waiving the late payment penalty. I understand that this is a difficult time for some, and I would like to move to amend in section one, May billing period to April and May billing period and to change the title to match.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts to amend in the heading, the last, next to last line for the April and May billing period and then in section one in the last sentence, account holders for the April and May billing period. And is there amendment, Mr. Martin?
Correct.
It is, Mayor.
A discussion to amend, Mr. Gates?
I think, a question, clarification, does, is, is it meant billing periods? I think, a question, clarification, because is, is it meant billing periods? The way it is.
You're, you're right.
If you say billing, April and May billing period.
We need to.
There would be one bill for those two months.
Right. Yes, that'd be April. It should, it should say periods both of those locations in the April and May billing periods, correct?
It's completely what I meant.
Thank you. Actually, very good. Thank you, Mr. Gates. Any further discussion on the amendment? To amend the language in the heading and also in the section one, promoting vote on those in that amendment. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
The motion to amend passes, as the main motion. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Resolution number nineteen, two thousand twenty passes.
Resolution number twenty, two thousand twenty, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to reduce the electric fuel and purchase power adjustment portion of utilities bill for all electric account holders by fifty percent for the May billing period and declaring an emergency.
Move the resolution we take on the pass?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of resolution number twenty, two thousand twenty. Discussion, Mr. Martin.
This is probably the, called the key piece or the cornerstone of the stimulus and stabilization package to inject some much-needed capital into people's individual lives that they wouldn't, they would otherwise be spending on their electric bill. And I believe the cost will be around three hundred and fifty thousand, of course, compared, one way or another, but it's, it's budgeted around that. And to reiterate my earlier point, this is going to be paid for out of the six-hundred fund. We'll be making up the difference out of the six-hundred fund, so it will not result in a rate increase later on down the road. It was very important to us that we not do a short-term fix to kind of long-term problem, and we are able to do so with this. So, I really appreciate the administration's willingness to work with us on this.
Thank you. And I stand corrected, I said earlier that, that reduction in the electric fuel and purchase power would maybe amount to about half, but that's not, that is not accurate. Mr. Ensmann, you know, because that, that component of energy component that is on our bill, that is made up of electric fuel and purchase power, but there are a few other dynamics that, would you want to explain this a little bit, please?
The, the energy component is made up of the fuel and purchase power, generation charge, distribution charge. So, there are, and there are other items that do make up the energy component within the power bill.
Understood. Okay. So, I want to make that clarification. I misspoke earlier, so I just want to make sure that everyone was aware. It, it is going to be, it'd be a nice reduction on the next round of bills, and if, if we're able to come to an agreement this evening, then that would take effect for the, for the May billing period, which goes out April thirtieth, or.
Correct. That's correct.
April thirtieth. It would go out April thirtieth, so this will be reflected very soon on the, on all the bills that go out. Mr. Martin.
The one question that I had, and obviously this isn't addressed in legislation, but it is a question that I had that I haven't received confirmation on. How will this be reflected on the bill? Is it just going to be shown as a reduction, or is it actually going to be shown as a reduction? Is it just going to appear there, or is it actually going to be shown as a credit on the account, so that people will be able to see that?
Mr. Ensmann?
We do not have plans to show an itemized listing of how it's going to affect the bill. There will be a letter that's going to be associated with the, with the bill that's being sent out describing the, the impact of the, this reduction. It would, to do such thing, it would actually cause us to get CMI involved, our billing software company. They would have to go in and write the program to associate the reduction to show it how it's implemented on the bill. That would come at additional costs.
Mr. Martin.
The obvious concern is that people will see their bill and say, I thought it was getting a fifty percent reduction, and then they're fighting with us that they actually did get it on their bill or whatnot. And I can see this is going to cause a headache. It is what it is. The other option is to do nothing, but I just, I, I can anticipate already the keyboard warriors being very upset that their bill actually went up instead of fifty percent reduction, which is, we've all seen this, too.
So, but again, it's a fifty percent reduction of, of the electric fuel and purchase power, which is a part of the energy component, so it's not, and again, I, I want to make this clear, it's not a fifty percent reduction of, if you got a hundred dollar bill, it's not going to be fifty next month. So, that, that, it will be reduced thirty, thirty-five percent, ballpark-ish figure. So, that's what we're looking at by doing this.
The best we can do is insert the letter with the bill explaining the different measures that we passed and hope that people are going to that.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. McLaughlin?
We have tight budgets around the city, and there's different projects that are very tight that we're working on, that we've talked about before, about how we're going to, you know, help the citizens on different projects. And with COVID-19, you know, Shelby is a hole that's taking a hit on this, too. We don't know what the future holds. So, that's the first thing. It seems like, you know, at this point, to me, it's fifty percent, maybe a little too much.
I would speak with, they have, Mr. Ensmann, this is a measured approach. At the very beginning, I think everyone, we were, everyone was emotionally charged, and we would want to do a whole lot more than that, even. Mr. Ensmann and all of us at this stage, we're well aware of some needs, we're going to have big-time needs in the, with the electric system itself. We have several projects and things that need replaced, big-ticket items. So, that's why it's kind of, it's a measured approach. It's a short-term, long-term thing, stimulus, but not to the place where it's going to cripple our electric fund. But, we're trying to help our, our customers. And then the other, then, this will not affect what we're going to do with the West Main Street sewer project at all. That's, that is, we're in discussion about that, and hopefully the next, you know, well, the committee meeting or council meeting will be presenting a plan on what we want to do to assist the, the folks out of West Main Street with the sewer project. So, this will not affect that. Correct, Mr. Ensmann, what I'm saying.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
That's also why, like, the previous council meeting when we passed the, the legislation providing for landlords and hotel operators and churches providing relief during a disaster. That's specifically why that legislation applied to electric and not sewer and water as well, so it didn't impede on those funds and the situation there, we'd be able to do some of these other things. So, we are, we are.
The impact to the electric fund is three hundred and fifty thousand, approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Mr. Martin.
And we even discussed maybe putting it off a couple months, you know, to give people some heads up, but then, then you get the opposite effect where people are using a lot of electricity because they know they're not going to pay, you know, it's just the nature of things. So, having it to where it goes on basically what's being consumed currently helps give us a true cost versus an inflated cost as well.
Mr. Ensmann, this would be on the March billing, the March usage.
That's correct.
April billing.
Yes.
Purged with the May billing, but it actually goes out the last part of April, but it is the May billing. They'll get, they'll get it in their mailboxes in May.
Yes, it is the consumption for the month of March, processed in April, mailed out April thirtieth for the May billing.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Resolution number twenty-two, two thousand twenty passes.
Resolution number twenty-one, two thousand twenty, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into a contract with Vantage Point Solutions, Inc., to perform a broadband needs assessment and feasibility study.
Move the resolution we take on the pass?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates for the passage of resolution twenty-one, two thousand twenty. Discussion, Mr. Martin.
Oh, yeah, this is the, we've talked about this ad nauseam, but this is the broadband needs assessment feasibility study to be, so we can accurately gauge our business plan for next steps for municipal broadband internet.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gates.
I've read through this, and kind of a fine print, but anyway, the, the last part, five point five, the confidentiality, these things are always problematic. You know, public records law applies. You know, we can put in all sorts of boilerplate, and we've seen these in other contracts. It's essentially meaningless, except that, you know, if we do get a public records request, we're required to let them know we've gotten the request, so it does not impede, you know, any public official or any private citizen that's coming to say, I want to see what you've got.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Resolution number twenty-one, two thousand twenty passes. Any miscellaneous business to be brought before council this evening? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, the council adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for adjournance. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
That motion passes. Council adjourns at eight forty-three. Thank you.